...to the Landmark County Board of Commissioners's informal work session for December 4th, 2018. And we'll start with the work session on the Warehouser Gate on High Heaven Road. So maybe we could start, Ken, with you for just a review of, well, you've already brought us up to speed on what has transpired prior to this, but any further or future staff work that's in consideration?
Not really. I think at this point it's for discussion. I have some materials. I know, you know, there was discussion about possibly having a public hearing or some possible options moving forward. As you know, again, you know, the gate was installed. It was permitted by the then Board of Commissioners in 2001. Additionally, in 2001, there was action taken by that board changing that portion of the road from a low maintenance county road to a public road, so recognizing that the county doesn't do any maintenance on that section. I did reach out to Warehouser for some additional information. They did respond. Representative from Warehouser, the land use manager, Scott Marlega, they're interested in still keeping the permit and keeping the gates closed. And the last action that the board had approved was doing the transfer from Willamette Industries, just recognizing that the permit was now under Warehouser. So that's the information I have up to this point.
Okay. So we did talk about a public meeting. If we do a public hearing, it'd be a public meeting to get some input from folks who had some concerns or some, you know, wanted to go on the record. So are we interested in doing a public meeting?
If you were entertaining making changes to the permit, it would be a public hearing.
It would be a hearing.
That was my understanding, that the public hearing would come if in fact we were going to make any changes to the board order.
Correct. Right.
That would trigger the necessity for at least a board action, and that could include a public hearing.
And if you wanted simply to have a public meeting to hear different views and perspectives on the matter before scheduling any, you know, making any changes to the permit, you could take that approach as well. It's really up to the board on where you'd like to go with this.
Warehouser's desire is to keep the gate private. They have issued keys to, again, these private entities. And there was some conversation about issuing keys to individuals, and that would not require board action.
No, I think it would because that would be a change in the current status of the permit. The permit now provides that certain public entities will have keys and, if I'm correct, that the county would decide whether or not to issue fees to any other public entities, but I believe it's limited in that way.
Correct.
Yeah. So if you wanted to consider a change to allow either the county or Willamette to issue keys to private parties, that would be a change in the permit. If we were to follow the process that we followed when the board order was first issued, what would that technically hold a public hearing?
So in conversations with them, was there any interest in them giving out keys to property owners?
You know, I mentioned some of the possible, you know, from seasonal closures, keys, things like that, you know, and they took that into consideration based on the latest written correspondence that I've gotten. They're, you know, they're back to basically wanting to keep the gate closed.
So if I'm clear on this, in order for us to move forward, we would then have to rescind that original board order?
Only if they wanted to make changes.
Right. Depends on what you want to do moving forward.
So that then would be the action that we'd take, and we'd rescind the original board order and go back to discussion on what, if any, changes or how we would work with Warehouser moving forward? Because they own the property and...
They own some property past the gate. I believe some of the other property up there is BLM land.
So Warehouser, BLM, are there any other private?
I think there's one more landowner that's up there, another temporary.
So the first action that would be required would be a motion to rescind?
No, I don't think you would have to approach it that way. What you could do is you could simply notice the public hearing and then follow the public hearing. Depending on the action taken by the board, we could then, after that, rescind the prior permit and issue any program that we can difference.
So the hearing comes before that?
Yeah. I'm sure that's only one of the changes.
Everything could be left status quo.
Correct.
And then?
Yeah. The last action that we took was simply to memorialize the transfer of the existing permit from Willamette Land Use to Warehouser.
Correct.
So Commissioner, what are your thoughts at this point?
Well, the community that lives up there are the ones most affected by it, as I can see this. I don't know what response we would get to a public hearing. I have no problem with listening to what the public has in mind, but by the same token, it seems like there's just a, what, two or three homeowners up there that are impacted by this above Willis Road to the gate? How many are involved? May I ask that question?
Sure. I gave you a packet at the previous meeting where I wrote in how many were there in '01 and how many more now. I believe it's 13 in '01 and there's 15, five additional either building sites or places that have gone in. That's just above Willis Road to the locked gate now, so our only way out. In addition to that, on the first time I spoke at a Commissioners' meeting, Warehouser came dragging their equipment down the road, you know, ripping up the county road, put in three more roads above Willis, at Willis or above Willis. I guess they're going to be selling 100 and some acres and they want to make sure the people, anyway. There's three more spur roads. So you talk about creating a place?
Before the gate.
Before the gate and before I can get out on Willis. So if people want to come in there and camp or do whatever they want to do now, they have a beautiful roadways that have been made. They drove a grader from behind the gate the same day I was shaking my head out and I couldn't believe what they were doing. They drove 90 miles an hour with a road grader down there to try to fix the road where they've made these spur roads. And if you go up there today or tomorrow on a sunny day, you'll see the little lakes that have been created. Just take Willis up and then you'll be right in your face, Willis to High Heaven. Take a right and you'll see the two more roads they've created. But since I started talking to Warehouser early on, I said, "I will drive on the road if the gate is open like we have." And so the gate, since the day they did those spur roads, has been just locked up tight.
Are you recommending that we consider a public hearing and then go forward with whether or not to rescind the prior board order and then go from there?
I think it would, since we've had enough input and I've had emails from other departments up there requesting that they have not to be able to speak, I think it would be good to have a public hearing, get all the issues out on the table here from the public with Warehouser present so they understand what we are facing as a county and have public works in attendance because the work on the road is affected by whatever decision we make and...
We don't maintain that road anymore, but...
We don't now, but if we, if we open that and we tell Warehouser that's no longer a road.
That would be a different kind of public hearing than if you were going to change the designation of that road from a public road back to a county road, county maintained. That would be a different... When it was done last time, it was done in two different actions or two separate actions. You had a hearing and on the issue of the gate permit that included a hearing. And then there was a second action that also included a separate hearing on the redesignation of the road.
Well, then I guess the initial hearing would be on whether we continue to have a needed road. And then if in fact a change were made there, it would be an additional hearing.
If the board wanted to change it back to a hearing.
I'd just say the...
That's the order from you.
The order of...
So as far as scheduling this, what are we looking at?
Well, there are notice requirements.
I mean, I would say give it at least four to six weeks to get out the notices and make sure the folks have an opportunity to be aware of the area and plan accordingly and then decide whether you want to hold it. If you want to hold it, you can do a regular phone session on Tuesday morning if you want to do it at a different time or a different location.
So then let's go ahead and pick a day for a call-in session and we can start the process of getting that information out. We have four weeks out from this Thursday. What does that give us?
Do we have our public hearing scheduled? I don't have that with me.
We have a couple already on the...
Make sure we don't have any other land use hearings or other hearings on the calendar already.
There is one inside of your folder.
Oh, there is?
I don't think there's anything scheduled at this point. It would be, it's that first page on the left. There's nothing scheduled beyond December.
Are you going to send notices to?
No, I think it's open there.
Surrounding?
Yeah, it generally goes to adjacent landowners who may be interested in property owners. Also, we see a notice that gets published in the newspaper.
It's scheduled in January. First Thursday and January combined. No, no, no.
Yeah, it's on Thursday. It's a combined, yeah, formal, formal because the...
That's the 3rd. I don't know what that is.
That'd be on Thursday, the 30th.
That's good. So it would be a week from the 3rd. You could do that on a week from the 3rd. What is that?
The 10th.
The 10th.
The 10th. What do we have on the 10th? There's something on the 10th.
Nothing. No land use?
No land use has been scheduled yet.
So we could go ahead and then for January 3rd at 10 o'clock?
Yeah, wait.
January 10th in conjunction with formal.
Okay. We'll double check to make sure that doesn't create any conflicts. If so, the notices can go out.
All right.
At 10 o'clock?
At 10, 10 o'clock.
Okay.
All right. Okay, anything else on this? So we'll consider that being the whole session on the Warehouser Gate. Since Silas isn't here, what we can do is go ahead, we can go ahead and reset agenda. And anybody who wants to leave us at this time, if you understand, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the, I just eliminated consent agenda, which is item C. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. And do we have a motion? I mean, we've all looked at that, so we're okay with that. And perhaps we can add to that the, under item D, our planning commissioner application, Joe Strum, to approve that on Thursday, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, you're going to put that on the non-consent agenda?
No, I want to move it from the non-consent under item D onto the consent agenda.
Yeah, okay.
And we don't have an executive session. We are waiting for Silas. Silas is going to sort of flush out the, some options for the community prevention as well as funds and some of the, some of the options there, also our marijuana tax funds. The other thing, Silas was going to do a veterans update, but we had some people in veterans who were under the weather. So that in the interest of time will probably happen to come back next week.
No emails to me, I don't think.
No.
No, I don't know. I'll have to check with him.
Okay.
Jerry or?
Jerry is sick. There are member people sick.
If we're going to, it'd be a good time to get a, put that on our agenda. I could invite Mitch to come over from Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. He likes to be engaged at local level.
Sure. So if we can find out a date for that and then...
I can check with Silas and then we can see what Silas wants to do.
I don't want to set his agenda for him, but I did have a conversation with Mitch down in Eugene a couple of weeks ago and he's looking to engage at local level, so.
I don't think we'll have time next week because of the other agenda items following?
Yeah. If we didn't set any, set a agenda, but I would like him to come in and just make sure that we stay connected with our state agencies because they're an important resource for us.
Okay. Well, let's do Commissioner updates as well, right, for Silas?
I did email him.
You did?
He's going to be here in five minutes, but I told him we're ready for him now.
Okay, so come in, have him in touch. Out of breath. So Commissioner, did you want to finish update, maybe yesterday's meeting?
It's been a crazy time, but yesterday I attended the Oregon Business Conference. It was an all-day session, started at eight in the morning, and I got home at 10:00 last night. But the first session was the Governor and the CEO, the Providence CEO, PGE, and the Durden Command at NIKE, and discussing the need for more collaboration as these different entities are putting into place their March orders for the year. So some good discussions held in that session. The next session was Senator Wyden and Senator Berkeley, and they were talking a lot about forest issues. And I found it very interesting that the two people who were most influential in causing problems are now running rate about how they're out there solving them. So I found that a lot interesting. Then we had representatives from a variety of different entities, larger corporations, talking about their plans for this upcoming year. And it was interesting. A young lady, she's a, oh gosh, she's the executive director for, I'm sorry, but she's a black lady talking about Ubuntu. You know what Ubuntu is?
I do not.
I didn't either, but it's "I am who I am because of what we are." And that was her, the focus of her message was, "As a community, we make each other." So it was a very passionate talk. And then water was a big, big conversation. Bobby Anderson heads up the Water Resources. He serves on several committees, but he's also the executive director of the Willamette Partnership. And he was, there's a person who, everything he said is part of who he is. And you could, it just came across so completely in his conversation about how we really have some water issues nationwide, but Oregon is facing some significant issues in that area. And I hear about it constantly because Bobby is the executive director of the Willamette Partnership. My son was his predecessor. My son is now the executive director of the Freshwater Trust. So I get a lot of information about water issues. But Bobby did an excellent job making the case for what's going on in Oregon there. We had breakout sessions that covered a variety of topics. So it was a, it was a good, full day of good information leading into a lot of activities that will be taking place this coming year across the spectrum of issues for our communities. And Health and Human Services was him considerably throughout that, working with community corrections and working with people with mental health issues and veterans. The housing, oh, that was another large component, was the housing issue. So it was, it was a full day and I've got a ton of notes and a ton of information sheets that I would be happy to share, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you for spending the day.
Yes. I was just filling in, so I was the one who got here.
He was just, he was just doing that. We went like this.
I should have given you some on board updates. Perhaps you just weren't really...
Anyway, thanks, Commissioner. Thanks for going to the meeting. Appreciate it. All right. Well, Silas Haller Steiner is here, and we've already approved the consent agenda, some of the items that were on there. But here now, we'd like to, maybe you can give us sort of a base cover of the community prevention and wellness funds, what that is and how we can take part in that and what we would be funding. And maybe we can move into the, how that at some point dovetails into the CCO contract, but with just some options here.
So yeah, I've got a board update. I was going to do that third of three things. I wanted to talk about the community prevention, or the peer assisted crisis program because we're about at our one-year anniversary. I wanted also to talk about the school-based services that we are providing in the seven school districts, including the request on the board agenda for a contract with McMinville Schools and then to talk about the community prevention on that line. And lastly, just to give you all an idea of the few things that are coming next week that relate to that. So the first one is I had promised a year ago when we did our soft start to come back and talk with you all about the Peer Assisted Crisis Center and bring a little bit of data. So we started November 15th, 2017 with the five-bed Peer Assisted Crisis Center that is here in McMinville. And I'm happy to report we've had significant success. And we're just coming up on the year. We did a soft start November 15th, but essentially we weren't fully operational with all referral sources until January 1st. But I knew with my board, I think this would be a good time to do it. What I provided for you is just some raw data. This is not something that I would, you know, present to a big community stakeholder meeting to talk about the program, but it does have the 85 unique individuals that we've served in one year, 85 people, which is significant. Most of whom have come from our area. I have any sense of demographics on page two. You can see that we're getting really nice representation in terms of broad demographic across the county. So we're not seeing everyone coming from one city or another. And it is actually quite reflective of population, given what we're, what we're looking at. And you can see the referral sources too. So that's really just informational. If Commissioners are interested or anybody's interested in following up with me and asking questions, you can. The summary of the cost-to-charge ratio on the front page just keeps us thinking about these kind of local investments that can be alternatives to high-cost inpatient care. And I told you I would keep track of that, and I'm doing that. Over time, we'll have even more long-term studies that we can look at a population like this. But on average, you can just see that in acute care hospitalization, these per episodes of care are running anywhere, you know, between $5,000 and $9,000 on average per episode of care. These are $1,000 a day episodes of care, so you can look at length of stay, five, seven, 10 days, and do quick math. But on the Peer Assisted Crisis Center, our average cost of stay is running, you know, significantly less. It's about $400 a day. So we're looking at the 3,000 range. And our average length of stay is mirroring or slightly less in terms of total days. So right now, we're looking at 6.62 days is the average length of stay. We knew we'd be between 1 and 14. That was the program goal. Now, we've had a few that had stayed longer because we needed to, but we set this up to look like a short-term acute, an alternative to acute care hospitalization in a non-institution, home-based environment with 24/7 SAP and a peer onsite and then continued peer and natural support back in the community. So it wasn't intended to be a longer-term hospital stay or a longer term or even medium-term transitional housing. So just from the early data that I'm seeing and all of these anecdotal stories, I've heard story after story about people really saying, "This changed my life. This saved my life." I've seen people handwrite notes to the program supervisor and some of the staff that they've shared with me that have been really touching. And we have story after story now, six months later, eight months later, they're stable. We've had people go on to get housing in our Baker Field project, which is our transitional housing and continue to be stable in a community.
So these are unduplicated?
These are, 85 are unduplicated, correct. Yeah. And you'll just see, I mean, again, I didn't clean this up purposely because it wasn't, if I was going to present a community meeting, I would create a little bit different summary. But this was the data that was available. You'll see there's a billing lag, which is very common with, you know, with our hospital claims. That's why we don't have things coming in and the rest of the claims that you'll see the lag.
Any questions?
Yes, I have questions. So as far as capacity, where are we? Are we under or over? And how is our staffing?
We're in that sweet spot of having capacity when we need it. And so that means there are sometimes beds that are empty, but we really wanted that to be part of the program model. And we haven't built, the way that we've really been able to invest in this model is not only going after the competitive grants that were just startup and some of the maintenance costs, but we also have a history of working at acute care alternatives in Landmark County. And so we did that across the seven county acute care region for many, many years. And now we still have the risk and the rewards, so both responsibility and the reward if we manage that budget well within our CCO budget. So we've taken some of that money and reinvested it simply so that we can have an alternative to $1,000 a day acute care hospitalization. So on few occasions, and there have been a few where we've had all five beds tied up, but we're not seeing that as the norm, which has been great. In terms of staffing, we've had some challenges with the regular shift. We've had turnover. We've had, you know, our supervisor has been heroic. She has come in and worked some long shifts and obviously some double shifts, and she's stepped up and done that. We've had other staff that we've had to pay some overtime, but we're fully staffed right now, a year in. And we've got our peer contract with Project Cable, so they work in partnership with us in our local nonprofit.
Are we always able to transition out to the next step housing? Have we had issues with that?
So that the need for longer-term affordable housing in our community is ginormous. It really is. So we've had some success, namely, we've had success either with some of the capacity we've built where it's specialized housing and we can bring people right in, or they've gone right back to family and natural supports. A lot of the people that end up in a moment of severe crisis, either at the hospital or in our crisis system, are not necessarily all homeless, so it's a matter of visits, say, if they're stable and what other natural supports. And people's risk to harm themselves or others is highly relational in that moment. So there's some of those risk factors that we can reduce and support and help them transition back in. With few exceptions, there have been some people that have come through the program. We see five unique people with all different types of challenges where they've wanted to go back and be homeless. We have had a couple instances. Again, it's the, I would say that's the minority. Typically, most people want to save a place to live that they can be secure. And we've had a couple of things happen like with the Mission in Salem or some transitions that we would not consider to be ideal, but we've had to help them in those ways as well. We need more affordable housing and we hopefully, as a community, will continue to plan and look ahead to the future. How do we can do that?
This was part of the conversation yesterday in reference to housing and working more closely with Health and Services because we have that need significantly in veterans, in people with health and mental health issues. And working rather than silos because the CCOs have a, part of their job is to work in those arenas, especially with the mental health and healthy conditions for the people in the communities. Water is an issue, making certain, you know, we have pure, I mean, drinking water. So there were a number of times in the different breakout workshops I went to where the connectivity between CCOs... between CCOs and the things we were talking about was brought out that how can we better integrate our services so that we don't, we don't have our, somebody with PTSD and those veterans and they don't have to be a veteran to be served, you know, the struggle with that. The bottom line is that is one of the health, mental issues that our veterans deal with when they're out on the street. So that is a part, a lot of that was how do we align more clearly and closely with the variety of different service agencies out there? So that's something that I think need, going forward, need to look at ways of integrating those services that we can, with the same dollar, or combining our dollars, we can make that reach. Anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
Yeah, that's great.
As you were talking, I wanted to throw that in there.
Well, on the topic of integration, let me talk about the second item which relates to the contract with McMenville Schools and my request for additional physician management to hear one of the. So this three-page summary gives you an overview of all the different types of prevention and health promotion and services that we are currently working closely with school districts across the seven county, the seven districts across the whole county. And when I say we, it's a partnership between Yampel CCO, the coordinated care organization here locally that serves twenty-five thousand of our hundred thousand residents. So one out of the thirty-four Yampel County residents is a member within this publicly insured health plan. And they are the major funder for physical health, dental health and behavioral health and the county works in partnership with the CCO to administer the health service for substance abuse and now health services within that. We do prevention work. We've worked with Lutheran Community Services, which is the other party, and we've been able to put together what we believe to be a really strong portfolio of services that all seven districts access in some way, shape or form. And in some districts, and the color code on the very first page gives you sort of a sense of where these services are and what they are, but the next two pages define them. So if you're curious, well, what's Good Behavior Game, then you go to the third page and see that. But on the second page, you'll see that the school services packages we've broken into complete services or Oregon Health Plan primary services. On the complete services, that really talks about what you get if you purchase a contract where we are bringing half of the revenue through the Yampel CCO contract. So that means if you're a health plan member in the school setting and you meet medical necessity, which is the way that Medicaid is established. So if I have the symptoms of trauma, PTSD, depression, anxiety, many of the things that a young child in our school system might be facing, then you can be diagnosed and with parental consent, you can actually receive that service in your school setting and the school-based commission can be there and be embedded in schools. We do that in almost all of the schools at this point, all of the districts at this point. And Lutheran has a really strong presence in the elementary school and that's part of, earlier this year, I was in front of you talking about the initiative and that's why on the first page we show the numbers between seventeen, eighteen and the numbers between eighteen and nineteen, so you can see the growth in total STE and we're really proud about that. Some of the other services are totally prevention-based services like the sources of strength, which is a suicide prevention framework that really gives schools a way to build a more nurturing community, which is similar to the Good Behavior Game, which gives teachers a way to help manage their classroom and teach character and skills development within the elementary school setting. It's an evidence-based prevention framework. So without going into great detail, I wanted to give the board an update and just tell you that things are going really positive with the districts. We're listening, we're having conversations about how to help them meet community need. Obviously, the need is significant. This is one way that the county and our partners, the CCO and Lutheran are being able to work in partnership and it relates to the contract that I have in front of you for approval this week.
So Silas, what, what's the predictor of whether or not a district is going to be amenable to our overtures for service?
Well, lots of times they're coming to us and asking us for help. If you look at the very top of page two, these are all the things that each of the districts can access. Our flight team threat assessments, the department, emergency department screens, our like lines for life contract with, or our crisis line and worm line and our team text, which is all through lines for life, which is a prevention and, and a crisis response hotline that's available statewide if you contract with them. Our mental health first aid training and some of the other population health activities. So it really depends, each district's organized differently and I don't have an answer to say, "Well, I've figured out all the ingredients as to when and how and why they access us." Obviously, the flight team is set up for a crisis. If there's a death in the school or a teacher dies or, or there's something tragic, then we've got to do immediate counseling and help the school figure out what, where we can be helpful in their process. But the prevention and other things like good behavior and the service innovation teams or sources of strength and some of these things, it really depends how far along the school is and thinking about what kind of safe nurturing environment they want to foster and where we can fit in. But we don't go to the districts and push any of this. I mean, we, we will go and give information, you know, here's how, here's what can be done. What I have found over the years is that mainly they learn from each other, so it's more teachers talking to teachers across, you know, the Yampel Carlton has been implementing Good Behavior Game now for two, almost three years. And we're hearing from other teachers across the county, "Hey, how do we get that here? The results have been really amazing for us," or my friend says, or my colleague says. And I think it's driven more with that. Then probably even a leadership level, I don't think it's necessarily the superintendent in each district saying, or the school board in each district saying, "Here's what we need to do."
Well, and that's one of the areas that yesterday, again, as part of bringing these more together, Jim Green was the director director of the School Board Association. I got together with him, I told him, "It's imperative that in his position, he works through the various school districts to connect with their CCOs and instead of waiting for a school district, how can we sit down at the table and talk about this and make it happen?" So we're using those dollars far more effectively and, so anyway, Jim was very open to that.
Great, yeah.
So, and there were three of his board members there at the table with him. So I think that's, that's what needs to happen is we need to be having a more common purpose with the resources that are available because the resources are not going to be, we're not each going to get every pot that we want.
Yep, agree.
So anyway, I just wanted to mention that and we need to reach out to each other.
Which is a good segue to the third update around the community prevention and wellness fund because the coordinated care organization here in Yampel County, Yampel CCO, has been using a collective impact framework very strategically since inception, five years, almost six years ago. And what you're talking about Commissioner is exactly the concept. So you build a common vision and then you develop the strategies and objectives to move towards that common vision, but you do that across sectors. So in today's publicly and privately funded, but we're largely focused on the public side with the Yampel CCO insurance and public K-12 or corrections and justice or other public health funded services through the county, we have tended to operate in silos much how we are funded in silos with different regulatory frameworks. The collective impact framework essentially says, you don't have to move all of those funds to align your resource on a shared vision and common strategy. And in some cases you can and it makes sense if you can leverage those efforts. So three years ago, we started down in twenty fifteen, a path to establish a community prevention and wellness subcommittee of the CCO board and to initially fund it with, which was at the time, a pretty modest investment of the CCO, it was one point five million dollars over a three-year period. Now, those dollars were stewarded by a committee that was made up interdisciplinary and across the community, but it was small and several of the CCO board members, myself included us out on the committee, I chaired it initially. Currently, Lindsey Manter, our public health administrator and my deputy is chairing it and I'm still involved in the committee work. But essentially, that group has gone through a process of looking at evidence-based prevention initiatives and making some strategic investments and then measuring our success against those investments. One of them was the implementation of Good Behavior Game, which is now in five of the seven districts and we hope that by twenty twenty it'll be in all seven. And it's been absolutely very successful with the efforts. There's been other things like the tobacco prenatal cessation program where we're looking at taking high-risk pregnant moms and giving them an opportunity for incentives and for some tobacco cessation to have healthy baby, healthy mom at birth. And the CCO really understands how high-cost a neonatal intensive care unit episode can be and what a premature baby delivery can look like, whether that's twenty-eight weeks or thirty-two weeks or thirty-four weeks can make a huge difference in that family's life. So there's been things like that where they're really looking at early intervention. And the, the one framework that really hit home with everyone early on around collective impact was the early learning hub. So our CCO is the only CCO that became an early learning hub and that worked with the Department of Ed funding for that. So those goals are really getting kids on track and, and evil and ready to learn by kindergarten and on track at the third grade benchmark for literacy because that's so predictive of future success in schools. So the CCO became invested early in the idea that health and education outcomes could be linked and we can leverage and that's partly why the school-based services have really fit well. So we're at a moment in time where the fund, the community prevention wellness fund is looking to expand and leverage other funds across the community. That includes the behavioral health and dental raise, so there's an interest in the community for next year's contract and having a one percent up premium put into the prevention and wellness fund. And the CCO board just voted for their new con, their next budget for twenty nineteen to also set aside close to three-quarters of a million dollars again for another allocation of the fund. But I included this one pager because the next part of the fund is really to get other entities, including potentially county entities, to, to bring some of the public funds in and then to go out to other foundations and look at leveraging outside resources. And in CCO two point O, this goes to the heart of what the state's going to be looking for, which is they're really looking for the CCOs to become much more focused on some of the core things that predict health and wellness over a many decade investment, not just a one-year return on investment. So traditionally, health plans look at their membership, they look at the one-year costs and they'll look at unavoidable, you know, avoidable costs of the ED for a diabetic that is maybe not properly managed or doesn't have all the skills. And so they'll, they'll say, "Well, I could put somebody in home with this person and help them and we'll decrease the, the high-cost care on this episode over the twelve months." But what we're really looking at is taking high-risk families and supporting them early or taking a student population that if they can stay healthy and well, they're going to graduate and maybe not ever need to become members of the Yampel CCO. So it's a very different look at kind of what produces health. And I was putting the information in front of you today because I wanted it to be front center because next week, when I put the contract amendment together for our whole contract, which is all the things that we do under the, what we call the risk accepting entity agreement with the CCO, there's a portion of it that I'm really hoping we can put back into this community prevention and wellness fund. And the part that's easy is what is the paper performance funds that come right through the CCO's contract with us and there's some language around reinvesting in population health. But the other part that I think I'm going to be recommending to the board to consider is putting what we've been given through the marijuana tax dollars, which are general monies that go towards prevention, early intervention or treatment, but that this really could be an opportunity for us to take those funds, set it into the fund and let that go to work leveraging other private funds. So if we wanted to like make a request that they go for dollar-for-dollar match or do something more bold like a one-to-two match and kind of stipulate, "These are funds that you could use to leverage other funds," I think that could be something that we just can't do here at the county as a unit of government, whereas with this nonprofit approach we could. And then there's some things around alignment, just having the contract leveraging that they can do where they, they still go through the same process of developing, here's the strategies we want to use and then they'll solicit bids and award contracts. But it's just a very different process to then have them manage those contracts from an administrative standpoint. It puts sort of the resource into one place. So that's why it's on the agenda today and it really fits with all the other topics I talked about because, you know, we know on healthcare in the United States, we're spending ninety-five percent or more of our expense on the sick care system on people's actual illness and less than five percent goes to prevention. And so one of the ways that the CCO is saying, "Look, we need to make a long-term investment this, we got to start shifting some of that trajectory." Now, taking three-quarters of a million dollars and putting it in the fund next year sounds like a lot, but the CCO's operating budget is a hundred and twenty million plus annually. So they're still not even anywhere near to, if they were taking ten percent of their budget and putting it into a fund, it would be more than a thousand million. So I, I think while it's promising and there's some investments in sort of a proven track record now over the last few years, you know, probably there's a lot further we need to go in thinking about a prevention system.
Yeah, one of the things came up yesterday and I think it's really critical is we are, every area of the community of Oregon is unique and we don't need a state mandated system. Those systems have to come from what we need in McMenville is entirely different than what they need in Plymouth Falls or, you know, Waller Academy or any of it. So it's really important that the CCOs exist, but that they have a, an ability to operate outside of some mandated state system and each one of the communities within that can take from the CCO what they need for their specific community. So I, I want to see the collaborative nature, but certainly not a mandated operational policy. So that, and what you guys are doing is exactly that. And so it's, I think it's really important that we continue down that road and your, to your point of wellness as opposed to illness is exactly right on that's what they just talked about yesterday. And we need to start being more focused on how do we keep people from needing the expensive, you know, to help people stay well because they have a lot less expenses with taking care of them after they get sick, so appreciate that.
Silas, a question about the, the paper performance funds. That's a given that, that's, that's not going anywhere else but here. Is that correct?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have to go back to this prevention fund, but we have in our contract stipulated that twenty-five percent of our total paper performance funds will go back into population health prevention that's evidence-based. So it fits perfectly. And the marijuana dollars that we've received that might or might not continue because there's a lot of speculation about whether they'll be continued through the legislative process. At this time, it'd be a one-time fund. We have those funds set aside and we've received them now and this would be a one-time allocation. We'd have to look at future years if we wanted to continue it. In fact, all of the contract amendment that I'll bring next year is a one-year contract because the CCOs are going through a five-year contract renewal that will be effective January first, twenty twenty. And they'll get a five-year contract and actually I hope next year, if that happens, to negotiate a, a longer-term contract for the county so that we don't have to come back every year with these modifications. It costs us a lot of money and administrative time to go and negotiate on all our lines of business. It's complicated and everybody's putting in.
I don't think Barry just finished with your question.
No, I, I just wanted to know, so that's a given, that one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, that's, that's, is there a question that that would, or could go somewhere else? Or is that, that's been earmarked? Has that been earmarked?
It's been earmarked for population health investments.
For population health, but, so this is, okay, let's say we, it's a natural fit for that. Now, and the marijuana tax money, that's prevention and treatment. There's no prevention, treatment and, is there another part of that?
The way the language is written in it, if you want, for next week, because I didn't, I didn't bring that today in the amendment.
Just basically.
But the way that the language is written is prevention, early intervention and treatment. And we have treatment capacity today. So what we don't have is prevention, early intervention. Evidence-based prevention, early intervention is where I think we need to make our investments because we've been wise with managing our total portfolios. So our, the managed Medicaid lines of business that the county handles and even our state general fund, we've been able to keep a portion of those in reserve here and continue to make investments back in to this treatment services.
So because in looking at the prevention, I look at programs in the past that, that were not successful. Let's just say national programs like DARE or those.
Yeah, right. Scared Stray.
Or any, any of those programs where, you know, for us to say, "Well, we have to put it towards early, well, prevention, let's just say prevention."
Evidence-based prevention.
But what does that constitute in our case?
Well, in our case, my thought is that we would put it into a shared community collaborative that is looking purely at scientifically proven. So there's been some level of peer-reviewed evidence that goes into this, the research design and the outcomes associated with these models and that you can actually. design and the outcomes associated with these models and that you can actually use that to predict some level of end savings. So like the Good Behavior Game is a really good example. And by the way, I have this longer packet that has all of the research citations supporting it that I just made copies for the commissioners, but if anybody who's in the meeting today, I didn't want to make another 10-page color copy, but I have it electronically if anybody needs it. But essentially, there's a lot of evidence cited in here that goes through one of the modalities, one of the strategies we choose, Good Behavior Game. And so the, the cost savings is listed out, but really what you're preventing is early delinquency, early risky behavior, which includes a myriad of things like diversion from justice system-related activities. But one of the big ones is just early experimentation with drinking, substance abuse, and that's actually tied, it's one of the most predictive things, age of early use or first use is the most predictive indicator of addiction tracks in later life. So we can do a good behavior implementation in a school setting and get at a whole bunch of social conduct and other conditions that might otherwise be hard to put our hands around. So they are things that we would look at the science and the evidence before you make an investment.
And just because I, as we, as we know, the marijuana tax is not a given, I mean, going forward, but we were talking earlier about treatment or, or early intervention and whether or not this would address some of the issues that we have perhaps with, I don't know, drug court type of programs that we need to, maybe need to prop up.
Yeah, so right now, our drug court model from a treatment standpoint is completely sustainable because what happened was we had two, three-year back-to-back substance abuse no health services administration called SAMSHA grants that, that led us into 2014, the Affordable Care Act expansion. And at this point, because of Medicaid expansion and the CCO's growth locally, we added 8,000 adult members, most of whom have been eligible for health insurance that they previously weren't eligible for in the adult population, and that's been serving the drug courts. So our model, we, we discontinued those SAMSHA grants and we actually haven't written for them because they have a rule, usually Medicaid is the payer of last resort, but in those grants, they make you use your other funds first. And we were actually having a hard time drawing down the SAMSHA portion of funds and we did some no-cost extensions to try to draw all of those federal grants in. So I get this a lot from Judge Collins, he sends me tons of stuff every week, you know, hey, we got thought about applying for this. And some of those grants are really set up for non-ACA states, so states that didn't do the Affordable Care Act are in a much better position to go after some of those federal funds. But we're in Oregon not well poised to do that. What we really need in the specialty courts is a treatment court coordinator. We lost that position. But that's been the judicial department and I've recently had some conversations with Judge Easterday and Judge Collins. And I think we have an opportunity in the next funding cycle to request that from Criminal Justice Commission. So for me, I go through the list of where those needs are and, you know, arrive at a moment in time where we have these marijuana dollars to think about and evidence-based intervention or prevention.
Only because I think about the loss of the women's drug court.
Right.
I think it really was a disappointment to a lot of people and, and now it's a different dynamic and it was kind of a shame.
I agree. I agree. And that decision-
If we could use some of this money.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, if there was a way to use some of this money to prop that up.
Yeah.
As a for instance.
And as a facts and information for the board and for anyone here at the table, that decision was made by our presiding judge, Judge Stone, and it was made because of continued reductions in their overall staffing budget over a multi-year period. So as the judicial system has been asked to do more and, you know, they, they go back and forth about is there a tipping point to add a fifth judge and where would the judge be? There's space issues, there's team. It's kind of like a position. You add a position in practice with 1,200 patients on the panel, what most people think is, well, hire another doc. Well, you got to hire the six people that support that position, a nurse, a care coordinator, another receptionist, somebody who's scheduling. And a judge is much like that. So the court's been struggling with increased community need in all their civil and criminal cases and decreased budget or at least some compression where their budget isn't trended at the same cost of their staff. So the decision to collapse the courts and the change to every other week was made not a loss of funds directly attributed to a treatment court, like the position itself. They didn't have a position identified with funds from outside. So it just was that they had used that to support the treatment court coordinator. And we haven't ever received money from the judiciary to support the treatment. We do have a grant for Criminal Justice Commission to do, support the adult drug courts, both women's and men's, but we funnel almost 100% of those monies to Provoking Hope and would can hope to continue to do that because that's been the certified recovery mentor support.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
So the last thing was just the next week, I've got CCO contract coming over. I'll be putting a detailed memo together that talks about both the community wellness prevention, or prevention wellness funds and more importantly, the total budget because it's almost a $19 million annual budget. It's our largest single contract that we have. And then two of the other subcontractors, Champion Team and Lutheran Community Services, including the relief nursery funds, we hope to carry forward into next year's budget. But it's all linked to that CCO budget. And then I'm putting together a request for a grant for our veteran services to do veterans' peer service or peer outreach function. And another date, I will be bringing the team in because I know Commissioner Stare asked me to do that, but we had a couple of sick employees and the timing today was compressed. But I do really want to bring in Jerry, Claudia, and Ed, and Ed is that new outreach worker.
And Commissioner, because Ms. Chu had a suggestion, oh, were you hearing?
No.
I did.
No, I, I had talked with Mitch down in Eugene a couple of weeks ago.
All right.
Mitch wants to get out into the communities more often. So I was suggesting bring him in when we have that meeting to really build that connectivity between us and the state.
Great, yeah.
So and, well, you've worked with Mitch, so.
Yeah, I'd love to do that if he's willing to come out.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a date for that?
I, I, no.
I'll pick a date in January.
Well, I'd like to do, oh, you're still here because you've been working so hard on the veterans thing.
You know, nothing prevents me from coming in as a private citizen at Grand Rapids.
That's right.
You know, I have that right.
Look out.
Yeah. So anyway.
If there's a way, is there a way in the next that we have?
It might be difficult because of the schedule with, I just looked at the-
Oh, you have to do next week is difficult. Or the following week.
The holidays. But I, I'm maintaining a good relationship with the people at O D A, so it's not a problem. Sharon, who was the acting interim director, when Camila, she's still there in a different capacity and, but the new director is also a young lady who's very interested in connectivity with individual counties. So anyway, I'll, I'll continue that conversation.
Okay. So thank you, Commissioner. So thank you, Silas.
Great, and I'll let Mitch come when we do get his data.
Okay, that'd be great. And then we'll plan on hearing for the, is it next week?
Yes.
The CCO contracts and talk more about-
I'll be back.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
And there is a gambling, uh-
Oh, yes, that was on-
Request for a gambling grant applicable to apply.
And that was on our consent agenda, so we're all-
No questions?
Grant to go gamble.
Well, to prevent gambling, make sure that the community needs assessment, make sure we are giving information to everyone who needs it.
Because we have-
Gambling is one of the few areas where we have treatment capacity that's underutilized regardless of your ability to pay. And we do a lot of managing our lines of business according to your insurance type or your, your status, your income. And it doesn't matter how much you make or how little you make, you can come in and ask for outpatient gambling treatment in Yankel County. If you need inpatient, it's available there as well. And love to get the word out around that.
Because we have, speaking to those in recovery, say that that gambling can be one of the hardest of their multiple addictions. So it's one of those things that you might not hear about. You hear about, you know, opioid addiction, that, that gambling can be significant. So thanks for that.
Yeah, family in recovery, yeah, I gambled on reelection, lost, so I've got this gambling.
He's got this gambling thing going. Well, we've got to talk to him for you.
I'll come and see you, right.
So, all right, well, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, thank you all for being here with Jerry in today's informal session. Thank you all.